Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Ms. Chrissy.
How you doing?
Y'all sound, y'all doing good. Y'all sounding real good.
Thank you, you too.
Yes, yes, yes.
So I'm excited about this. So as I said, you know, this is just a conversation. I just need you all to tell me about the amazing things you all do every day and the importance of this weekend in American history. That's all, that's all I need. It ain't much.
It ain't that much at all.
Alright, so what I do, as I said, I'll just do a countdown and then I'll go into my spiel. And then Cam, I'll start with you. And then, like I said, you know, we'll run your 12 to 15 minutes and I'll do a countdown and come back and then we'll segue into you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Do I call you Councilman Johnson or how do you want to be addressed?
I mean, that's fine. Councilman Johnson would be fine.
Okay, okay. I can do that. And yeah, and then we'll talk and let you tell me about who you are, where you're from. You gotta give it on story. So I need to, what made you go into politics story?
Oh God, trust me. I got, listen, I got that. I mean, really, it's amazing what, how this happened, but yes.
Okay, okay. We finna, we finna jump into it now. Alright, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna put you all on mute for a quick second and then we're gonna get started. Five, four, three, two, one. Welcome to River City Roundup. I'm your host, Christie Taylor, where the Mid-South voices gather, discuss, and inspire. You can check us out every Sunday on both of our stations at 12 noon Central Standard Time, right on radio, 87.7 FM and bumping on at 6.3 FM. So we're excited to have another great show for you today. And let me tell you, welcome to March, everybody. We are about to get into spring. And I love the fact that we're able to kick off the month of March with a very important, as we've eased out of Black History Month, we're gonna get a chance to kind of tag team for Black History Month into some amazing history. And to help me do that is an icon in our city. Yes, we're talking about the one, the only, let me make sure I set this up real good for him, Stanley Campbell Footman Campbell.
How you doing, Ms. Chrissy Taylor? The one and only Ms. Chrissy Taylor.
There you go. There you go. Show me love right back. There you go. That's what you do though. You show so much love to this city. And you know, there's really not too many people in the city who do not know who Cam M. Tensley is. But for those who might be listening for the first time and may not have their ears to the grind, or ears to the streets, should I say, give them a little background on who Stanley Campbell M. Tensley Campbell is.
Well, Stanley Campbell, AKA Cam M. Tensley is basically a full servant of God. Let's start there. My solely purpose in this world is to serve God's people and to serve Him. So let's start there.
That's a good place to start. That's a safe place to start.
Yes, and very humble in doing so. I just hope that He smiled, that Most High God smiled on my service, you know, on this earth, I would say.
Now, I know that that comes because you were raised right. That's what folk in the South say, because you was raised right. Let's talk about formerly, let's talk about that family history that really instilled in you a servant leadership heart.
Yes, yes, thank you. I'm always related to speak of my family, the lineage of my family, especially my mother, Thelma Brownlee. They called her the singing Shercropper. I just think my inspiration definitely came from the Most High God allowed me to be one of my mother's seed, I'm the ninth seed of Mount Mounters Seed. And He allowed me to experience and see my mom to be such a humanitarian in Mississippi as well as South Memphis. Just a great, great motivational type of icon. I call my mother the icon or the matriarch mother of Memphis. The inspiration started there with my mom being this great activist in the community, feeding the homeless and the less fortunate when I was the age, six, seven years old, you know. That was a long, long time ago. I don't wanna give you, I don't wanna give you no years on that, but a long, long, long time ago. But yeah, I really think the Most High God allowed me to experience that with my mom for many, many years before she made a transition in 2020. So most importantly, yeah, most importantly, I'd like to start there with my mother as the matriarch, heavily matriarch of the Mount Mounters Seed in her giving back and her will and her fortitude to fight for the less fortunate and to fight for the community youth, you know. My mom, my mom was a hero. I mean, I would just sum it up like that, Chrissy. She was a hero and I saw that, you know. And it molded me. She molded me in many ways, Ms. Chrissy, many ways.
Wow. You know, I really love the fact that you can sing your mom's praises and the fact that she was able to instill in you. And I really want you to pause for a second for those who may not understand about the mustard seed nine, what that means to you and the family.
Yes, Mount Mounters Seed, of course, the scripture you're speaking of, the grain of the faith, the grain of the mustard seed. You know, that seed is so small, but when you plant it in fertile ground, it sprouts up and it becomes one of the most fruitful tree, you know, on earth that has many branches and that, and it starts with a small C. And I named the legacy of my mom, I named it after my mother as far as the Mount Mounters Seed, back in late 1980. You know, like, you know what, my mom, which is Ma, they, many called her as Ma. And I pulled that, that description, that many would call her as Ma, and added the seed, added the mustard seed as the siblings, my eight siblings. So I came up with the Mount Mounters Seed based on my mother and my eight siblings. And I'm the youngest, so I am the ninth seed of Mount Mounters Seed. And all of us have our own individual faith in what we do in the community and for God's people individually, you know, individually. And so it was just fitting to name the movement, I would say, because it is a movement. It was fitting to name, you know, to have for my mother and my eight siblings and myself, the Mount Mounters Seed Foundation.
Wow, I really love that. And I know that, you know, speaking of your foundation, that you are for 2024, you're in the midst of a capital campaign, so I wanna make sure I insert that in there for those. And we'll learn about more ways that people can support your great work.
You may want, you may want to repeat, you may want to repeat that again, Ms. Chrissy, if you will, the campaign.
Okay, I will, I will, I will repeat that, ladies and gentlemen. Never mind. Cam is having a 2024 capital campaign. If you have ever been touched by this man in any form or fashion, this is your time to show your love, not only in words, but indeed and in money. Can we say money, ladies and gentlemen?
Money, money, money. Yes, yes.
This is the time because he really is expanding and we'll get into that. Matter of fact, today's show is about a part of his expansion. But definitely we are supporting all that Cam is doing here in Memphis. Once again, the Mid-South Voices, we are gathering, we're discussing, and we're being inspired by such an amazing man. So get that money together, ladies and gentlemen. Contact him. We'll give you ways you can to show your support to him for all the great things he has done and will continue to do in this great city. Now, of course, with you being number nine of the mustard seed, and we know the work that you have done in this community that we'll dive into. I just wanna know, how did you come up with the name Memphis Footman? I'm curious about that. You already have the name Cam M. Tensley.
Yes, well, of course, first, first, you know, Cam is my nickname, childhood nickname, Short for Campbell. My last name is Campbell. So a lot of my classmates would call me Cam Short for Campbell. M. Tensley, I adopted that in the 90s, early 90s, I think 90, 91, which is why he was for artists. And I'm a digital performer artist. Now, the Mount, now the Memphis Footman is a new type of vision. I would say more of a walking museum, I would say. And there's several branches of Mount Mounters Seed, like the annual Stone Awards that we do. This year is the 29th Annual Stone Award. We have the M. Tensley Award that we do under the branch, giving you branches of the Mount Mounters Seed Foundation. We have Stone Awards, we have the M. Tensley Award, we have the Rise of 300 More Leaders Ceremony. We also have the Guys' Soul Festival Coalition, which we feed and clothe the homeless. We've been doing that for 40 years. The Rise of 300 More Leaders, which is a new endeavor, I call that movement a movement of accountability. So segue to Memphis Footman, segue to Memphis Footman. Those type of branches, I've been doing, my family, Mount Mounters Seed, I've been doing it for 40 plus years. Just recently, last maybe three years, after my mom transitioned in 2020, I was able to, I was a caretaker of my siblings. I was able to really get out and travel different cities and states. And I'm big on governizing leaders anyway. That's what the Stone Awards represent. I knew that I needed to extend my vision and my movement outside of Memphis in ways of meeting and governing, selecting, engaging, and leaders outside of the state of Tennessee. And it's been happening tremendously. Now, the last year and a half, I knew that I had this epiphany in ways of, we know about this thing called critical race theory and how they are slowly trying to stop the progress of teaching our kids our history. And that is really concerning to me. So Memphis Footman character is mainly is to be a visual image of least we forget. Memphis Footman is an image of a 1960 foot soldier or 1960 civil rights leader, whether it be Marlo de Kane, Malcolm X, Megan Everes, Fred Hampton, and on and on and on. And that history, that history, we cannot forget the history of those great, I would say, ancestors now. And unfortunately, a lot of our youth and kids have no idea of those great icons and foot soldiers and leaders. I have the House of M. Tensley Museum, so every time we have students, whether it be-
I was just about to bring that up. I was about to say, one of the ways, you know, your walking museum as the Memphis Footman.
Yes, it's connected to-
You actually have a brick and mortar. Let's talk about the House of M. Tensley.
Yeah.
Located in Midtown Memphis.
Yes, it's located in Midtown Memphis, 1289 Madison Avenue. It is a brick and mortar business nonprofit charter. I would say this year, thanks to the late Deionne Bailey, it was his idea to convert It's My Time Entertainment. That was the name of the business from 2000 up until 2014. And he knew my history. He knew my history. We're talking about the late Judge Deionne Bailey. He knew my history.
Yes, we're talking about-
Yes, and it was his, he was my mentor. It was his idea to at least entertain the idea of converting, converting the facility, the brick and mortar facility into a museum because there's so much history in my family, so much history that I'm involved with. And he sat down with me three or four times, like, no, you gotta do this. You gotta do that. So it was his idea to convert it over to a museum because I'm big on our history and preserving our history, archiving our history. And he knew of this and thank God, I know he's in heaven because the guy has done so much for the United States, not only just the city of Memphis. So the House of M. Tensley Museum, yes, House of M. Tensley Museum that had been in existence since 2014, archiving and telling the story of Memphis history and Mississippi history. Especially the theme of it is, it's all about my mother and her resilience and fortitude, picking, and my father, you know, picking God cotton at the early age, four years old, in the cotton field and then going to WSAO radio stations and singing there, you know, afterwards. And stepping off the cotton field and deciding to move to Memphis for a better life for her nine kids, which is amazing story, Chrissy, I'm telling you. And-
That's a film. It's a film in the making. It's a film in the making indeed.
Uh-oh, wait a minute. You're going somewhere else with that, you know, so, because there is a documentary in the making of that. So the- Yes, so the House of M. Tensley Museum, over the last 10 years now, the museum, we've had many high school students, college students, even tourists from other different cities and states would come through this, would come through the museum. And I realized that a lot of, a lot of students and adults have no idea about their past history or our forefathers. No idea. And that, that was very concerning. That's when I knew that, wait a minute, we gotta tell our story. We gotta tell, we have to tell the story of our forefathers. That wasn't that far along ago. We're talking about just 40, 50 years ago. And because it was reoccurring, I started realizing that the history was a disconnect, I mean, two, three generations. I had, I had a busload of elder alumni students from Shreveport, Louisiana. They came to visit the museum earlier last year. And I was giving them the history of Marlo de Kane and Memphis as well as Shreveport, well, as Louisiana, and they didn't have no idea. They were older than I am. Yes, they're in their 60s, you know, like, they didn't have no idea. They knew somewhat of the history, but they didn't have no idea of the whole full picture of the history of 1920s all the way up to, you know, the 2000, until they visited the museum and they realized, oh my God. So that was concerning, not because of the level or the less, the miscommunication of our history and the shoulder that we stand on. Because if you don't know, you don't know. It's because, right. But the concern was more so that, okay, some, it was a disconnect because we're not, we're not really teaching it. We're not really preserving it. We're not really moving forward and letting the people know our history and containing all the information so we can show them, this is what it is. This is, this exists. These are the people that we stand on shoulder.
That's the foundation.
Right, yeah. So Memphis Footman is the physical image and putting it right back in your face, like, this is history. You gotta look at this. So what is, why are you dressed like you're in 1960? Because I'm representing and I'm commemorating and I'm celebrating those foot soldiers and civil rights leaders that went before us and still here, which is amazing. So that's Memphis Footman, nutshell.
I love this. And this is a great opportunity to pause again and say, this is the reason why 10 years in, because it's 10 years since you started the museum.
Yes.
Why it is so important in 2024 for us to wrap our arms around him and support him so he can take this history to the next level. And this is a capital campaign year. We want you to all to learn more about the House of M. Tensley and all of the arms in the different award shows and outreach that he does. And we're gonna be talking more about the Memphis Footman when we come back, right after this. Five, four, three, two, one. Welcome back to River City Roundup. I'm your host, Christie Taylor, where the Mid-South voices gather, discuss, and inspire. And today we have Cam. Y'all know him as Cam M. Tensley. Some call him Stanley Campbell, but he's one of the mustard nine. And let me tell you, ladies and gentlemen, one of his major outreaches that he's doing now that's taking him beyond Memphis is the Memphis Footman. He was telling us how it's literally walking history. And for those who've never been to the House of M. Tensley, it's right there in Midtown at Madison and Cleveland, right around the corner. I think it's Rico's Chicken is somewhere nearby too, right?
Yes, right up the street. Yes, it is.
Some of them may know where Rico's Chicken are, but I want you to know, you all need to really learn more about your history. And he has painstakingly, or should I say, with much love and attention to do this. And people around the country and the world come to Memphis, not just to watch some of the, you know, major museums, but the House of M. Tensley is on the map and we wanna help Cam take it to the next level. Now, let's get to this because I found out that the Memphis Footman has journeyed to Selma this weekend. Let me give you some details about what has taken you to Selma, Memphis Footman.
Okay, well, let me give you a slogan then, then we'll segue to why I'm here at Selma. The slogan of Memphis Footman is, and I would say it's a quote phrase, least we forget, you know. Memphis Footman quote phrase is "One foot, one step, one faith, one leader, one state at a time", meaning that his whole movement is to travel, rebuild, reeducate, recommit, recommit to the history. So that's Memphis Footman quote, "One foot, one step, one faith, one leader, one state at a time." Memphis Footman have traveled from Tulsa, Oklahoma, Tennessee, Little Rock, Nan, Arkansas, Mississippi, the deep woods of Mississippi. And I can go on and on and on as far as traditional landmarks that Memphis Footman have traveled. And Memphis Footman, let me say this, Chrissy, I have to say this so we can segue to why I'm here at Selma. Memphis Footman, Memphis Footman was conceived, can I say conceived? We're talking about in a spiritual way.
Spiritually conceived?
Yeah, Memphis Footman was spiritually conceived in Memphis three years ago. It was birthed, it was, Memphis Footman was birthed on the foot, the foot of the Pettis Bridge in Selma, Alabama in 2023, this time last year. It was birthed in Selma, yes. It was birthed in Selma. Memphis Footman was birthed in Selma, 2023, at the foot of the Bloody Sunday Pettis Bridge, this time last year. Thanks to, thanks to this great guy by the name of Councilman Michael Johnson. He's the great city council of Selma, Alabama. Thanks to him, he allowed, he helped me birth Memphis Footman. This time, I think it was March 3rd, yes, of 2023.
Of last year. Well, let me say this for those who are listening. We know that the delta of this entire southeastern region of the United States has a lot of history, like civil rights, basically. We are the cradle of civil rights. And there has always been a strong connection between Memphis and Selma. And to know that the Footman was conceived in Memphis but gave birth on the bridge in Selma?
Yes. Literally.
Saying that literally given birth on the bridge in Selma. First, we've seen movies. We've seen documentaries. We know John, you know, the late, great Don Lewis and all the things that have come out of Selma. And to have someone today, Memphis, giving us that really strong connection. Cam has been gracious enough, and this gentleman has been gracious enough, to join us for today's River City Roundup, and that is Selma City Council, Michael Johnson. Thank you so much for being a guest today.
Oh, thank you. How you doing, Ms. Chrissy Taylor? Thank you for having me.
Hey, Chrissy.
I wanna make sure I said his name right too.
Yeah, Chrissy, check this out. Check this out. Before Memphis Footman was birthed, last year, I knew I wanted to meet this gentleman by the name of Councilman Michael Johnson. I had reached out to him. We finally connected. I wanted to meet him personally. It was my first time visiting Selma, Alabama, period, my whole life. And I'm 50 something years old. Well, I'm 30 something years old. But it was the first time, but I wanted to meet this great leader in Selma, Alabama. And I met, and thank God he allowed me to travel to Selma, Alabama. Had the opportunity to meet him in this, the purpose was to meet him, pull from his energy, and hopefully invite him to the city of Memphis to honor him and present a stone, prestigious stone, even award. And that was last year. And that was, that was the one of the biggest purpose of coming to Selma. More so than, more so than, you know, Footman being birthed. It just happened. Like, I didn't know that Footman was gonna be birthed in Selma. The purpose was to come and meet this great man in Selma, Councilman Michael Johnson. It just happened to birth. Footman was birthed in Selma at that time. So thank God that I had the opportunity to meet this guy, talk with him, and find out everything about this guy. And we are brothers now. And he sent, yeah. Well, you let me know when you want me to introduce him.
Look, it's about Cam, man. Look, let's keep it going. You're doing a good job. Well, how you doing?
I'll let you all decide how, Councilman Johnson, thank you for being a guest on River City Roundup. You know, I know you gentlemen are live right now in Selma, Alabama. The weekend, you all have been having an amazing weekend. It'll keep coming Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Tell me, first of all, give me some information on the who, who, the reason Cam had to come to Selma to meet you. Apparently you got a long record.
Well, yeah, let me start out first how I met Cam, you know, and he mentioned some of it. But this is an amazing young man. And I got a phone call from this young man here back here in '22 because we just had a major storm that hit 40% of our city. I mean, it devastated. And when I said, it almost took us completely out. And of course, we're getting calls from everybody. And everybody was so good to Selma, offering to help, donations and bringing goods in. And Cam called and, of course, I'm a councilman, then I might answer my call regardless of what the situation is and what time of night you call, because, you know, that's, that's the purpose of being a councilman, to be able to serve when people need you regardless of what the situation is. So when Mr. Cam called me, I answered the call and we talked and he said he wanted to bring some things to Selma because his heart was there. And he sent, to make sure that I went, he went to the hole, so he went up for games. He sent me his profile and everything, let me know who he is. And, you know, we got talking and connecting. And he brought a carload of stuff, you know, big box of not used stuff, brand new stuff, everything that was awesome that the community can use. And we went to the holding place and we got the opportunity to meet some of the workers, the directors and the public work that was putting the stuff in place that would be able to distribute to the needed, you know. So we got the opportunity to talk and I told Cam, I said, Cam, look, you may not be able to get a place, but don't worry. You ain't gotta worry about that because I will make sure I house you. I have no idea this man is a robbery, a killer, or what. But just got the opportunity to talk with him the days and weeks and months. I think, I think we talked almost up to about a month before he came down. And then he gave me a call and said that, well, Councilman, I'm on my way. I said, okay, let's keep encouraging him. Make sure you make the right turns and make sure you get here like you should. And true enough, he did made it. He came and after he got a chance, I took him around Selma and let him look at the, how devastating our city was, how torn, all these buildings was demolished. Got a chance to meet, I'm not sure he got the opportunity to meet the mayor at that particular time, but no. But still, the mayor was so busy, but he got a chance to meet some heavy hitter here and there. But I tell you, that's where it started. It started back here during our storm in '22 when the storm hit us and this young man, along with his team, not just Cam. He had a, he had a team up there, that all, all the people that came to get out of Memphis and brought some love to Selma. And I don't wanna leave them out. I want to say thank Memphis. And I can't, I have to, I just can't say thank you enough for what they did and what they continue on doing for Selma. Because they recently got some back here, August, right. They brought some school supplies and stuff for the kids and stuff, you know. So, and the team came with them this particular time. And I was so excited to see them and they came and- Uh and I was uh, I was so excited to see them and they came and um, and, and worshiped with us. Uh and also they came to honor uh Selma own black uh mayor, uh mayor James Perkins, which is the first black mayor of the city of Selma. And uh he is doing the third, he doing the third term. And uh but uh but actually, uh he did two terms straight, then he lost uh like twice and came back to win in twenty twenty. Uh but uh, but, but yes, Cam is this amazing man and uh, and uh right now we done came uh joint to the hip. Uh so right now we uh, we just real tight and just anytime he want to come to Selma, he know he got a place to stay. Uh uh I don't have to be him with him, uh it's just the door is open for him.
He trusts me like that.
Like that, you know, cause uh this young man really don't prove a point to me. And I'm talking about, we've just been knowing each other a little over a year now and everything. So right now we is real close and uh we, you know, we got each other back and I will continue to support them. And whatever I need to do to help Memphis, cause Memphis was there for us and I would never forget it uh for what they done for the city of Selma. And you are.
Well, thank you, thank you so much, Councilman Johnson. And for those who are checking us out, you are listening to River City Roundup. I'm your host, Christie Taylor, and we do have Stanley Cam Intense. He's in the building and he is in Selma. I should say he's in Selma for this amazing weekend that's happening. And he has been gracious enough to share with us this amazing man from Selma, City Councilman Johnson. Now, I know that you come with a lot of solid history. And just kind of give us an idea of why Cam felt that it was not only important to support Selma, but to also provide you with an award at the Stone Awards.
Now, I let him tell that part about why I, why I were chosen. But, but let me say this here, I am so grateful um to be part of Selma, to born and raised here and to be able to be part of what took place uh back in the sixties. Even though I wasn't born, uh I, I, I take my hat off to the foot soldiers. Uh the ones that is the reason why I am a city councilman. Uh the, the reason why Mayor Perkins, uh the first black mayor, uh while we have Congresswoman Terry Sewell, uh you know, is the first black Congresswoman from, from, from Alabama, from Selma. You know, so really, like I said, getting the, what the, the, the young ladies and young men did back in sixty-five, uh the struggle they did and the, the, the views that they got to be able to get us where we at today, not just on the Selma, but nationwide. Things done changed all over and everything. So I'm so grateful for what they did and um, uh that's why we continue uh, uh celebrating this uh uh the Jubilee uh of what happened on Bloody Sunday. Um and I'm, and, and Cam, you know, uh you mentioned the Footman. Uh it was amazing. I honestly, I had no idea. Uh but we talked about it, he said, Councilman, I want to um take this, take a picture, uh you know, and, and, you know, I want to put this jacket on, this hat and these glasses and these shoes and all of them. I'm like, okay.
Earl is about to go.
Yeah, I'm like, wait, can you turn into Batman or something, you know, so, you know, with, you know, I'm like, what going on? So it really lost, I didn't understand, but after I saw what's going on, I'm like, wow, this is really nice. And you know, it really was, his issue was being made where he was portraying what happened with the foot soldier in the sixties something, you know. And uh so, you know, he kind of like, um, I think he went up as a reg- regular and then he came back as a footman.
Yeah, that, that's the thing, real quick, Chrissy, uh real quick, I didn't have no idea visiting Councilman last year that I was going to be smack dab during the fifty-eighth annual Jubilee with the whole world was in this city. This is after the great tornado they had. So I didn't know until, he told me, he told me a couple of days before coming, but I didn't know the detail. And so that Sunday, um they had the bridge crossing with the President Biden and everyone. So I said to myself, you know, I don't want to cross the bridge with everyone. I want Memphis Footman across the bridge by himself this Sunday. Now, we talking about a city councilman. I'm telling you, I don't know not one city councilman from the state of Tennessee, Tulsa, or any other city or state that I visit that will wake up six o'clock in the morning and follow me to the bridge and take the photo and video and video the transition of, of the birth of Memphis Footman. And the councilman said, yes, when I asked him to do that, he said, yes, he would do it. He was on the bridge with me that Monday, on my way before leaving, coming back to Memphis. And he took that, that famous photo of Memphis Footman holding his hand at the foothill of the bridge. Councilman took that photo. He didn't want to take that photo, the councilman, yes. So he helped, he helped birth, yes.
That is iconic. That is iconic. I'm really just moved on how history can repeat itself and that, of course, with us both, you know, uh Cam being in the entertainment and film and theater industry, how so important the art is and arts are in helping to present history. So I applaud you all. And photography, of course, is part of that art and culture. So thank you, Councilman.
Thanks, thank you guys and thank Cam as well. And, and really, I appreciate uh this conversation that we having. Uh 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 it's, it's so much we can, you know, we trying to cram so much in for a little time we have, you know, but, but like I said, I, we can talk about Cam all night and still ain't enough time to talk about him. So he's just awesome, you know. Uh but, but, but I am so grateful to be a part of this interview here. But let me just tell you, uh I really wasn't into politics, uh you know, and how that came about. I know you had asked me about that. Um back here several, several years ago, uh my uncle was deaf. He, and he was, he was, he was born uh like all of us can hear and talk and everything, but uh he got polo, polio. And uh and it took away his uh, his voice and his hearing. And uh he worked for the city of Selma for forty-five years. And at the time, you know, he couldn't really drive, he drove a tractor, but uh, and the city would allow him to do that. And but meanwhile, he used to walk back and forth to work uh in the cemetery department. So after he's, he, he came to me and said he want to retire, cause he was kind of trust, I was a little boy, but he always trusted me by helping him get things done. Instead of his sister, which is my mom, uh my mom, his sister and my, and my aunt that raised me. So um I went and, and uh, and talked to the uh, the mayor Smithman at the time. That was Mayor Smithman was the mayor at the time during the sixty-five, during, during the uh Bloody Sunday. So I went to him and I said, well, uh mayor, my uncle, um uh Mr. Johnson want to retire. And um, you know, and, you know, so we did everything, all the paperwork and got it, got it done. Plus along with the cemetery director did everything. So he did retire. So I was expecting to hear from them about having a retirement party or something, you know, in that nature. Never heard from him. So I went back about two or three weeks to a month later, I say, hey, uh, is we gonna, y'all gonna do anything for my uncle? Um because this man um worked for the city for forty-five years and y'all just gave this white man a, a, a hell of a retirement party just for doing videos uh for the city of Selma and for five years. And my uncle done, done worked his butt off. So the Smithman said, Mayor Smithman said, yes, we, 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 we gonna do something. Yeah, you're right, Michael. I don't think that was wrong. But anyway, make it long story short, we, we had it in the council chamber. So while I was in the council chamber, I'm looking at the, the chairs at, at the podium up there and I said, hmm, maybe something I want, I want to do one day. But I never thought about it, but I'm, I'm, I'm a, I've been in business myself, cause I never worked for a white man a day in my life. And I'm not saying that in a racial way. I'm just saying, when I got out of trade school, I own a body shop called Johnson Paint and Body Shop. So when I got out of trade school, I tried to get a job in a body shop, but I couldn't. So I had to, you know, own my own business up. So but meanwhile, I was in business, I, I started my business in, in uh, let me see here, nineteen eighty-one. Cause I got out of high school in seven to nine. So when I got out of trade school, I just went, I made it into my own business. But in twenty twelve, um I had an opportunity that came to me, which is Mayor Perkins at the moment right now, came to, came to me. And, and at, would actually call for me and ask me to come to the house. And I went to his house and I say, hey, mayor, how you doing? This is a black mayor. He, he beat Smithman out in uh, in two thousand. And uh, and, and twenty twelve, uh he asked me, he said, you know, we need a councilperson to run your ward. And um, are you interested in doing that? So mayor, you, you know, I, I don't have no interest in this, you know, I said, you know, I'm, you know, I went to trade school, I don't have no knowledge of all this, what I need. No, no, it ain't all about schooling and all, you know. I said, well, mayor, I'll, I'll think about it, let me think about it. So I did thought about it and I, I did went to him and told him that I would do it. And at that particular time, it was a, you know, city uh wide election, which he was running and a few others, a few other um, uh city councils were running as well. And the sad part about it, I won and he didn't. And you know, yeah, so I'm like, oh God, now I'm up here now by myself thinking that I had somebody to hold my hand during the election. That was in twenty twelve, November, then I got sworn in November fifth, twenty twelve. So then uh, you know, of course, the next uh four years was November twenty uh sixteen. The mayor ran again and he lost. I'm like, oh God, no I don't. And I won. So now I gotta go another four years without him, he, he with me. And, 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 and the good thing was, his father was my campaign manager for twenty twelve, twenty sixteen. You know, I'm like, oh man. So uh, I said, okay, I said, okay, well, okay, I gotta do another uh four years without him. So now here it is in twenty twenty, it came, it came around again and this time he won. And uh so now I got an opportunity to found to serve uh under his leadership and everything. So uh that's how I got in there because he, he came to me and then asked me, and then like I said, again, it's something that I, I thought about it when I was in the council chamber uh during my uh uncle retirement gathering in the council chamber uh with his department head. But, but that retirement didn't feel right because anytime a person had to go to another person to ask them uh about giving something to someone that is well deserved and you got to ask them to give my uncle uh something to show him that you appreciate his service over here, it didn't, it just didn't felt right to me, you know. So but anyway, some made me felt like that's what I wanted to do, but I never pursued it until Mayor Perkins, which is the current mayor now, uh came to me in twenty twelve. And that's where I'm at right now. But, but let me say this also, this is it. This is it. Like Michael Jackson said, this is it. So when I come out in twenty twenty-five and uh, and it's gonna be after the sixty, um, um.
Bridge Cross Jubilee.
Yes, Bridge Cross Jubilee uh on twenty, next year. So uh my term will be up in October, November, uh twenty twenty-five and I'm not doing it no more. Let's might as get in and try to uh with some new ideas and some young, cause I'm, I'll be sixty uh four at that time. I think it's time to smite us get it from, from that point.
You know, something, I really appreciate your story and to know that it, it really connected to family, that it's connected to community and uh just really learning how to go with the flow of God. I just really see that God's hand was in that, uh just planting that seed and how it was nourished years later. Now, we're gonna be coming back, ladies and gentlemen, here on River City Roundup. I'm Christie Taylor. This is where the Mid-South voices gather, discuss and inspire. Five, four, three, two, one. Welcome back to River City Roundup. I'm your host, Christie Taylor, where the Mid-South voices gather, discuss and inspire. And today, this has been such a joy. I have, you know, normally I'm just talking to uh, you know, someone who is in Memphis. But because of Stanley Cam Intense Campbell, we get a chance to have somebody, an esteemed gentleman from Selma, Alabama. I mean, if I can, I'm in Selma right now. And uh, Councilman, I would like for you all to give me a recap of the weekend you have been enjoying and what you're planning to do on this Sunday.
Can I start?
Yeah, please, go ahead. I start, then I let him take over. Look, uh Chrissy, uh I got here uh Thursday, right? I think it was late evening, maybe, well, early evening, maybe four, four o'clock. And when I tell you, when I pulled on his property, he was in um, he was in his vehicle. And as soon as I, as soon as I pulled up, all he said, with the car, he, he was in his vehicle with the car running. He said, all right, pull, I need you to pull underneath the uh, uh this, the, what do you call it? Yeah, the carport, yeah. He said, and jump in the, the vehicle. I said, okay, you know, I mean, I'm in this city. I respect it, brother, whatever he say, let's do, let's do. So I got out my vehicle, jumped in uh the, his vehicle and he like, hey, we go, we going to Montgomery. He said, we going to Montgomery right now. I said, okay, let's do it. So we went there and we came back and um, we took this, came back to Selma, took a shower. And uh he's like, okay, we going to uh, uh the, 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 the mass uh meeting program, uh which was Thursday night.
Right.
And um to experience that, that was Thursday night, to experience that, to meet uh Dr. Bernard Lafayette, which was, was, was the first, he was the founder of the first uh mass meeting.
Right, yes. He, he was the one that um, uh started the, 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 the mass meeting uh to uh, to get the right to vote um at the church, Tapanaka, uh Baptist church, um that was, the meeting was held at. And he um, he, 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 he talked about the history and the things that took place back in that day. Uh also we had some um, you want to go and finish this, uh some freedom singers, the original, the original freedom, freedom singers.
That was amazing, Chrissy.
Yeah, these was one back in the sixty-five was singing back then, that, and still singing now.
Still singing now. I, I, I was so uh amazing, thankful and I, and I had chilled the whole evening in church just observing every, everything and seeing these icons and legend, that's living icon, living legends that's here. Like the uh, this, the, the, the civil rights, uh, uh, uh freedom singer.
Oh, yes, yes.
To actually see, there was what, four or five of them?
It was, it was two guys, it was four, four, four remaining, it probably was four, but four were just still living.
And I'm actually seeing them with my own eyes, like real time, like, oh my God, and listening to them. Yes, it took me back to nineteen sixty. When I tell you, there's nothing but God allowing that to happen and experience that, who gets that? That's, that was amazing. Thanks to you again, Councilman. And that, and that was Thursday, meaning that as soon as I touched down in Selma, it happened. Uh from Montgomery and back and then to the church and experience uh, uh the saying Dr. Lafayette and um, um, Mayor, Mayor.
Yes, Mayor Perkins.
Perkins, he said a few words. Uh the whole evening was just uh amazing and us having uh the, the spirit of the mass, the, 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 the mass meeting of nineteen sixty and being a part of it. That was Thursday night, you know.
Well, so if you can, I know that they have the website and for those who may not have had a chance to attend, just kind of run down the itinerary that's um, that the weekend info and tell.
Well, it, it was a lot was going on. Uh but now like on Friday, uh it was a lot of the meetings together. Uh people could, I mean, you had to choose what you want to be part of. But they had something for uh everybody, for young, the young groups, uh older groups. Uh it was a lot of meetings was going on on Friday. Now in fact, they have a play on Friday night, Selma, you know, the movie that was done um back here. Uh yeah, so some movies played. We really truly enjoyed that with the kids and, and everybody will pay, play a part in that. And then that was a good uh play for Selma. That was awesome. Uh on Saturday, uh I, I, you know, again, uh my brother here, I left him uh in charge and, and let him do what he do.
He had to go to his friend funeral.
Yeah, I had to go to a funeral service, right, on uh, on uh, on, you know, Saturday. And uh but, but Cam, you can tell him what you parade.
Oh, yeah. So while he was at uh, my condo's again, uh Councilman.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
While he was at the funeral, I, I experienced a great parade uh with the Battle of the Band. Uh I think the name of the street is Broad, right?
Yes, Broad.
Uh great. I was just so, so uh elated and, and full of energy just on the side and enjoying uh the whole festivity and seeing uh, seeing all ages, you know, part of uh, part of this parade. You know, I'm a big performer artist, you know, so I love the visual of everything and I love to hear uh great music and, and I experienced all of that.
Well, one thing I, I want to say, I think we jumped a little ahead. Also that morning, I got Cam up that uh, early Saturday morning. We went to Selma High School and we, and we had breakfast with the foot soldiers.
The original foot soldier.
Original foot soldier.
The original foot soldier.
Everybody was in there, was uh pretty much was uh, uh foot soldier. Uh you know, plus with some guests, guests in there. And um so it was really nice speaking and hearing uh different things about that, a lot of them getting awarded. But uh that was uh, that was big there. That was really big and uh, and actually that was my first time uh going to the, to the um, and actually the first time I went to the mass meeting last night as well. Uh the other night is where the Friday night. And then on um, on Saturday morning, we went to the um, uh the breakfast, breakfast, yes. Uh but so that, but.
Now, I, I, I know that you gentlemen have been ripping and running there since Thursday, going to Montgomery, coming back. But Sunday, now Sunday today is a, a, a holy day in Selma. City Councilman, just really share with us the importance of this day for the residents and citizens of Selma.
Well, you know what, um, you're right. This, 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 out of all the days, this is the day here. Uh cause you know, this is the day that we all gonna come together uh after we do church service. Uh you have a choice of what church you want to go to. We have First Baptist, Brown Chapel, which is in the middle, uh in, in the midst again, renovated. Uh uh Ebenezer and, and other churches, which we. Uh, uh, Ebenezer and and other churches, which we got politicians is all in different churches and all. But uh, but we will come together in actually, um, shortly, um. In in front of Brown Chapel Church where we gonna meet up. And when we meet up, uh, that's when we form the march and that's where the march take place. And it's very touching at that time. Very touching. Uh, so when we get in in front of Brown Chapel Church, that's where the march started, right in the G W C Hall, what we call the projects. Uh, we'll, we'll form uh, from there and we'll move on down, uh, Martin's King Street and and head on toward Alabama. Heading toward the Elmen Pella Bridge. We'll be doing the same route that that took place in sixty-five, you know, uh, on Blood of Sunday. So uh, but meanwhile, we'll have, um, um. With the age of some of the older ones now, what we'll do, we'll have them to get uh, driven to the foot of the bridge. And back in the day when Jesse Jackson, John Lewis and all the ones, uh, F D Reese, all the ones that lot, lot going on of the year now. Uh, used to walk from Brown Chapel Church to reenact with us and uh, and and go on that, the back that route. But right now. What they do now is take the uh, the ones that remain of their living to let, to drive them to the foot of the bridge. And while the rest of us walk uh, to meet up and to meet them at the bridge. Uh, and also. That day, earlier that day, which Cam had opportunities to uh, uh, have dinner. Uh, with uh, majority of the, the politicians that will meet at the Saint Jane Hotel. And I was able to get Cam to come in with me last year. Then Cam, tell some of the representatives that you uh, so.
He surprised me with uh, a uh, private exclusive party with uh, one of the youngest senators of Alabama, right?
Yeah, well, well, we speak at the dinner, the Saint Jane Hotel, Maxine Waters.
That was more of. That was more of a, that was more of an exclusive chill breaking uh, experience for me. That he allowed, he got me, cuz we, we talking about secret agents everywhere. We talking about the Black Caucus, you know? The Black Caucus was in, was in Selma last year. Yes, and um, he got clearance for me. To be a part of the brunch. It was a brunch. You know, with the Black Caucus, like Maxine Waters and all, like, oh, my God. So I'm, I'm there. I am there, Chrissy. And I'm looking around and and right the hand, right the hand, well, it was more the hand on my right side. The whole table, all, all of the. Walking distant. It was just amazing that uh, he got me into that uh, that private uh, brunch with um. With the, with the Black Caucus and had opportunity to talk to Maxine Waters, you know. She, she even asked me about. I had on a rise three hundred T-shirt with my khaki pants. I was casual, but yet corporate, you know. I had that corporate look, Christie. Can I say this, okay, real quick? Uh, you don't, I don't know if I mentioned this to you. I was sitting at the table. I saw this Maxine, cousin Maxine walked by me towards the uh, the food table. And she walked back and I said to myself, Chrissy, if if the Congressman walked by me once more. I would get up and introduce myself. The whole time, I'm told to God, right in my head, like, God, if you have her to walk by me, one, one more time. I would be bold enough to step, you know, just stand up and introduce myself. And it happened. And I did. And and the best part of that, that I didn't have to sell myself. She asked me. What was this on my, what is this logo on my T-shirt? And I, and I told her about the rise of three hundred. She said, oh, my, oh, my God. That's amazing. I know about the history of Memphis. And uh, and she just looked at me and said, young man, uh, please keep that going. It is needed. The movement. And that just blew me away. That's all I needed here. I was done the rest of the weekend.
But let me say this here, like, real quick. Um, actually, we, we, we in the process now to to meet uh, uh, um. Um, some heavy hitter politicians right now. And um, and also, we got uh, our um, Vice President Harrison. Uh, is spending uh, attending today. Um, she'll be here. Um, and 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 a lot of the senators and 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 congressmen that uh, Cam met last year would be here as well. We're gonna try to meet up again with the brunch. I'm gonna do all I can. Cuz I got clearance already, but right now, I'm hoping and praying that the, the connection I got, I'll be able to get him in. Cuz I told Cam, I move left, you move left with me. So uh, and a lot of people know, know, know who uh, Cam attends to is cuz he did come here uh, on uh, last year. Right, to present the mayor as the first, like I said, might said earlier, the first black mayor with with uh, award, uh, him and his, his staff. They did do that. Uh, but uh, but I'm gonna say this here and um, this year is gonna be okay. But next year gonna be all the change, you know, cuz.
Councilman Johnson, okay, we finna set this up. Now, the Mid-South Voices gather, discuss, and inspire. And he's about to inspire you, Memphis. To find a way to caravan with Cam and Tinsley. To Selma for the fiftieth Jubilee.
Now, sixty, sixty, sixty. Sixty Jubilee, yes, yes. But yeah, but let me give you a little, little rundown on the fiftieth. See, back here during the fiftieth, it was so many people here in Selma. I, I honestly, I was so afraid that the bridge was not gonna hold all them people on that bridge. It was, it was, it was huge. Uh, of course, we had Oprah. Oprah was here. Uh, Oprah and her team was here. And oh, God, I felt so special that night cuz I own a bar. And I had Oprah team here. I was hosting their team here at my, at my bar. You know, when they signed the bar up with all the people, you know, with the staff from the city hall and others, you know, so that was good. Uh. Also, you know, we had Carmen and John Legend cuz they sung Selma and uh, Bridge of Trouble Water over the bridge and the bridge was lit up. No dry eyes nowhere on that bridge. When they sung Bri- uh, uh, Bridge on Trouble Water, I think I'm saying that right. Uh, John Legend sung, oh, God, John Legend sung that. And after he get to sing, song, singing that one. He came, uh, Carmen came in and sung, they sung the, the, um. Glory. They sung glory. And then also, what they did was they had Tuskegee uh, choir, uh. Yeah, Tuskegee Choir was in the background. So it was awesome. That was really beautiful. And then also, we had uh, B E T. Uh, team here, you know, the different uh, commentators and all was here being TV. They had a big. Stage side with all kinds of. Entertainment was on the other side. But now Carmen and John Legend sung on the bridge. And what, and I love it because uh, at that particular time, which Cam got opportunity to meet uh, Mayor George Evans, which he just passed, left. He left us about a year and a half, about, not even a year ago, about six, seven months ago, he passed. And uh, but he, I I love his, he was an awesome mayor, which he, he made sure that his council be part of whatever he be part of. So he made sure to call all of us on stage. We're coming in and John Legend. That was honored to me to be there, be part of that. Uh, and then plus a lot of movie stars and actors was here. I'm saying that for about the fiftieth cuz the sixth is gonna be, gonna have to top. What happened in the fiftieth, you know. So uh, we looking forward, cuz I think this is why the fifth and ninth is, don't have a lot of. Uh, headline, like major headlines uh, for, to perform like we always do. I think they saving a lot of this for next year. So I'm asking anybody that's very interested in coming to the sixty, um, uh, anniversary Jubilee, please go ahead and try to make a reservation now. Uh, get what you, you know, uh, try to make plans because it's really gonna be worth coming.
Tell me about the plans of the Stone Awards. We, 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 we. The councilman and I is having a conversation about uh, having a small intimate Stone Awards. Uh, uh, during that period uh, in Selma. You got it first. You got it first.
Yes, yes. And we will, so I'm not doing it this year, but I told Cam, uh, it would've been like more like a rush. Let's just wait and do it next year. Uh, making so much uh, bellow hard because I think during the sixtieth and and.
And it'll be the thirtieth annual Stone Awards.
Yes, yes. And it gonna, and it gonna be a little different. Instead of honoring uh, the regular foot soldiers. I think we're gonna be honoring the fallen foot soldiers. Right, so what we've been trying to do is uh, have the family come there, let them know that we'll never forget them. We always wanna keep them. Uh, around because them was the ones that really got us where we at today.
Yeah. So it'd be, it'd be, it would be a exclusive uh, intimate Stone Awards. Um, uh, next year. Of course, the Stone Wars, the thirtieth annual Stone War may be in Tus, Oklahoma. Not Memphis next year. That's the conversation. Like, the, 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 the Stone Wars in October of next year. The, this conversation will happen in there, uh, the thirtieth annual in Tus, Oklahoma. But. Councilman and I have a conversation, I have a third, a small version, an intimate version of the Stone War in Selma. Honoring the fallen foot soldiers, uh, not only just in Selma, throughout the whole United States. Uh, we are, we already have. Had conversation with uh, at least fifteen uh, uh, civil rights leaders uh, already. Uh, throughout different states that say, yes, they, they would, they would come to uh, Selma to receive their award uh, next year.
Can I say that I feel so very honored on this Sunday, Bloody Sunday? For us to be able to commemorate those who have, who are still here and for those who have fallen. And who have paved, literally paved the way uh, over the bridge of a troubled waters. And thank you so much. Uh, City Councilman. Thank you, uh, Cam and Tinsley. For sharing this experience with us. You know, we are with you in in heart and in spirit as you are enjoying the rest of. This weekend. And I know on tomorrow. Once again, Monday, Monday, you're gonna have, once again, the Memphis Footman will be crossing the bridge in Selma. And also some other activities.
Well, yeah, with Memphis Footman, uh, I, I wanted to take a Memphis, I want a Memphis Footman image to be taken in front of uh. Uh, what's the young lady?
You know, Miss Anna Cooper. She's the uh, young lady Oprah Winfrey, uh, p- uh, played in the movie Selma. Uh, you know, my grandmother and her was best friend and she stayed right around the corner uh, from my uh, grandmother's house. And uh, and the house is still there and we'll take, Cam, they'll take a picture there in front of her house. Uh, as, you know, and 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 let me, this lady, I've been knowing her ever since I, I was born. And and how I found out that she did what she did was in the history book. And this is God in the truth. When I read it in the eleventh grade about what Miss Anna Cooper did, how she slapped this black, I mean, this white shell named Jim Clark. Uh, you know, and and of course, they beat her. They beat her real bad. And I asked her, when I ran all the way from s- from school to home. And she was in the, in the, in the dining room with my grandmother crocheting. And uh, where they're doing quilts or whatever, there was something like this. I said, Miss Cooper, uh, is this you right here in this book? She said, yes, baby, that's me. I could not believe that this lady made history about what she did, you know, for the right. Uh, to vote. And and it was uh, and we named a street after her as well. So um. I had an opportunity to know this young lady to, uh, to work on her car as well. So uh, yeah, but but Oprah uh, portrayed her in the movie Selma. She did. But Cam will go back there tomorrow to um. Do that. And we got some other things, but we don't wanna talk about it right now. That we trying to get him uh, some, some Photoshop that I think be nice of what he, what he got going and uh, but right now. I can't promise yet, but we're gonna try to make some things happen that I think really looks good, that what he trying to get done.
Wow. This has been truly an iconic interview. Thank you so very much, Stanley, Cam, and Tinsley Campbell. And thank you, City Councilman Michael Johnson from Selma. I really appreciate you all being here as guests on River City Roundup. I tell you, I'm just really honored. Thank you all.
We thank you, Ms. Chrissy.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Sure do. Thank you, ma'am.
You're very welcome. And thank you all so much for listening to River City Roundup. This is truly where the Mid-South Voices gather, discuss, and inspire. Thank you. We'll see you next time.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
All right, this was beautiful. Hold on one second. Don't hang up your tip. Um, it's downloading the, uploading the last little part of it. Wow. This was really beaut- thank you so.